Okay, guys. Bob?
Do you want to give out that number and stuff first?
Yes, if you're joining us at Facebook Live, and you have an ID, and you need an ID number to get into the program, the ID number is 76449429. I'll repeat, the number is 76449429. Is that correct, Lindsey? Okay. So we'll move forward, I hope you all can hear me. Uh, Bob, go ahead.
It's 5:34, I call the El Reno Air Park Authority Regular Meeting. We will start with roll call. Ms. Ryder?
Chairman Robinson?
Here.
Trustee Cronister?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn?
Here. Consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Air Park Authority, and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be consideration rated on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Approval of minutes of the March 10th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the El Reno Air Park Authority. Number two, approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year 2019-2020, ending June 30th, 2020. Approval of claims requiring authorization for the period beginning March 1st, 2020 and ending March 31st, 2020.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Uh, we'll start with Ms. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Cronister?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It is now 5:36. I call the El Reno Recreational Authority Regular Meeting, Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. Roll call will start with Ms. Ryder?
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Cronister?
Yeah, present.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Recreational Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the March 10th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the El Reno Recreational Authority. Number two, approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year 2019-2020, ending June 30th, 2020.
A move?
Second.
Have a motion second. Adjournment?
Uh, I need a roll call for that one.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Ryder?
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Cronister?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Motion for adjournment? Motion.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's now 5:38. I now call the El Reno Hospital Authority Regular Meeting of Tuesday, April 14th, the order. Roll call votes start with Vice Trustee, uh, yeah, Vice Chairman Cronister?
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Here.
Trustee Ryder?
Here.
Trustee Ballhorn?
Here.
Chairman White?
Yes. Alright, we'll go to consent agenda. Uh, consent agenda, the following items be considered by routine by the El Reno City Hospital Authority and be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Approval of minutes, the March 10th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the City of El Reno Hospital Authority. And number two, approval of budget amendments for the fiscal year uh, 2019 to 2020, ending June 30th, 2020.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion for approval, by Ballhorn?
Second.
Second by Ryder. Roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Cronister?
Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We got a motion second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Okay, let's move on to the, um, we usually do Irma, El Reno Municipal Authority, but let's go on to the City Council meeting. I think people are wanting to, uh, uh, discuss kind of the hot item today about, you know, our proclamation and everything else. So I'd like to go to the, uh, El Reno City Council meeting, and then what we'll do is we'll skip down and do the, I'll go all the way to the consent agenda, and then we'll do the, uh, the items, F and the nine, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, I'm here.
Alright, let's, uh, before we start, let's, uh, Roger, would you mind leading us in the word of the Lord? Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today under these trying circumstances. Lord, we pause, we pause to be thankful, counting our blessings. We pause to remember the first responders, medical personnel, community leaders, state leaders, and national leaders, who are making decisions for the health and safety of our nation, our state, and our community. Lord, we pray for your continued guidance during these troubling times. We know that as spring brings hope for new birth and new life, there's hope for our community and hope for the future here today. We thank you for those who are dedicating their time and their efforts to making difficult decisions, Lord. Pray for, pray that you will give them wisdom and guidance, and pray for the wisdom and guidance of our community. All these things we lift in your name, amen.
Amen. Join me in the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's see, we'll go on to, uh, we're going to not do, huh?
Roll call?
Roll call start with, uh, Councilman Ballhorn.
You're here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Alright, we're gonna go into awards, we're gonna do Legalese when we have more time. Uh, I wanted to make sure we got, you know, he's doing his deal, so I wanted to kind of make sure we have more time. So I'll come back to him, but I do want to, uh, I got a Kent Legale Day, but we can do that, do that another day. But I want to also do the proclamation, uh, for the 1995, uh, Alfred P. Murrow Building bombing, uh, for the federal building, and who all impact, and I want to make sure we do that remember of, members of looking back and thinking forward. Whereas, April 19th, 1995, the Alfred P. Murrow Federal Building was targeted by domestic terrorist bomb. Whereas, 168 people were killed, hundreds survived, and thousands were changed forever. Whereas, the City of Oklahoma City and the State of Oklahoma and their citizens have shown remarkable compassion, resilience, and unity under the wake of this tragedy. And those qualities continue this day in the form of service, honor, and kindness, also known as Oklahoma Standard, which we all try to abide by. Whereas, the City of Oklahoma City National Memorial Museum, a beautiful moving tribute to memorial of this event, its victims, survivors, and first responders, sets today on the site of a former, of the former Murrow Federal Building, assuring the memory of this tragedy will not be forgotten, and workers to prevent the repeal of this tragedy. And whereas, the City of El Reno lost a beloved citizen in the bombing, Virginia Thompson, who I personally know, who is one of the sweetest ladies that you'll ever meet, who is absolutely a devout Catholic, a mother, kind and caring person, and absolutely the standard of a wonderful El Reno citizen. Whereas, the events of April 19th, 1995 changed Oklahoma and our nation forever. But through looking back at the example set in those decisive days, we can think forward to a better future for generations to follow. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the 25th anniversary of the Murrow bombing building, the mission statement of Oklahoma City National Memorial and Museum is, "We come here to remember those who were killed, those who survived, and those who changed forever. May all who leave here know the impact of violence. May this memorial offer comfort, strength, peace, hope, and serenity. I therefore, being resolved that Matt White, by the powers vested in me as a Mayor of El Reno, Oklahoma, and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the year 2020 to be the year of remembrance for those beloved citizens lost to our city in the bombing of the Alfred P. Murrow Building, and vow to continue their legacy in love and service to community throughout our work as leaders in the City of El Reno." And then I'd also like to do the proclamation for the National Telecommunicator Week. In 1999, the Congressional Resolution named the second full week of April, the entire, of every year, National Telecommunicator Week. And if emergencies can occur at any time or any place, they require the assistance of fire, police, emergency medical services. And the 911 hotline helps people emergency situations, and the 911 call taker, terror taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way. And whereas, 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely successful stressful situations with calmness and efficiency, whereas, when emergency occurs, a proper response of police officers, firemen, and paramedics is crucial to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of those emergency responders depends upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who 911 communicators center, and the public dispatchers of the 911 dispatchers, everyday superheroes providing assistance before any of their emergency services arrive on the scene. And whereas, public safety dispatches are a vital link to our emergency responders by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them with information, ensuring their safety. And the public safety dispatchers contribute substantial to apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries and illness on a daily basis. Whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her duty during their duties. I therefore, Matt White, be resolved, with powers vested in me, the City of El Reno as mayor, hereby proclaim the second week of April 12th to the 18th, 2020 to be National Telecommunicator Week, and honor the men and women who diligently and provide professionalism to keep our regions and citizens and emergency responders safe. Thank you so much, dispatchers, for what you all do. Okay. Let me move on to the proclamation from the mayor saying, uh, COVID-19. Is that right, Lindsey? Okay, and I'll read it, I'm gonna read the papers deal, because it's a bigger, bigger print for me. Sorry. Alright. Whereas, Officer Mayor of City of El Reno's state of emergency revised. Whereas, the World Health Organization who declared COVID-19 coronavirus to be a global pandemic. Whereas, the President of the United States has declared an infectious disease national emergency declaration to combat COVID-19. And whereas, according to the State of Oklahoma Health Department, as of 12 noon on Tuesday, April 7th, 2020, there have been 1,472 confirmed cases of COVID-19 and 67 deaths from COVID-19 within the State of Oklahoma, and 40 cases confirmed COVID-19, and one death of COVID-19 in the county of Canadian. And whereas, the health professionals and researchers have determined that COVID-19 is a spread of human contact and infectious, and whereas, avoidance of human contact throughout the methods such as social distancing is believed to stop the spread of COVID. And whereas, the spread of COVID is a disaster affecting life, health, safety of El Reno residents, and the non-residents alike. Whereas, the provisions for state law permit the mayor of the City of El Reno to proclaim that state of emergency exists within any area of the city, and therefore, I'll be resolved, I, Matt White, by the powers vested in me as a Mayor of El Reno in Oklahoma, provide, do hereby provide this proclamation. A state of emergency in the City of El Reno, effective Monday, March 16th, 2020, updated on March 23rd, 2020, and amending Section 2 and 7, and 7, updated on Wednesday, March 25th, 2020, and amending Section 1, Section 7, and 8, and Section 9, updated on Friday, April 3rd, 2020, and adding to Section 7, and updated Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. Section 1. The City of El Reno strongly urges and recommends shelter in place for all residents. Residents shall stay at home or their place of residence except for working and critical infrastructures after, as for more particular described herein, the conduct of essential errands. Essential errands shall remain those errands which are critical to everyday life. That includes obtaining medication, groceries, gasoline, and visiting medical providers. All residents are encouraged to use delivery services and curbside services whenever available. Section 2. Other cities' facilities will be listed below. However, all public, private gatherings under events, and events will hereby be postponed and canceled, and no permit for gatherings or meetings will prevent, at said locations, shall issued until further notice. Public facility update. The lobby access at City Hall Municipal Building will be open to communication through a intercom system. Spur Lane is off, uh, is closed, the library is closed, the senior citizen center is closed, and the city garage is closed. Facilities with exterior access only by intercom are the cemetery office, public safety fire safety office on 27th Street, available by phone service only. Station 2, open with precautions in place. Crimson Creek Golf Course, open to residents only with an annual pass holder, uh, and only with the precautions that we've been laid. El Reno Regional Airport. Rental facility updates, no rentals. Northwest Community Center, RV clubhouse pavilions, individual access only. Denny Club, uh, facility, closed. All city-sponsored events and the center theater closed. Basically, uh, Section 3 goes into, "The city manager will, shall revoke all pending permits and not issue any permits for public or private use. Uh, street sidewalks, facilities, or projects until further notice. Meetings of all El Reno boards, commissions, committees are hereby postponed and canceled until further notice. All meetings of the El Reno Council authorities except for the cancellation of requirement. These meetings will remain open to the public, but steps will be taken to ensure close contact between attendees. Is encouraged to watch these meetings, on public meetings, on Facebook or by television with any questions regarding the agenda being issued to staff beforehand." Make sure I got, okay. Section 6. The City of El Reno Municipal Court docket is canceled until further notice. Cease the schedules and arrangement hearing. The trial be rescheduled, then concluded, the juvenile dockets. The municipal judge shall issue an order rescheduling cases, and the municipal court clerk shall issue new court dates. I'm sorry, Section 5. The El Reno Municipal Authority/City of El Reno will be not issued, will not be issuing cutoff notice on water or sewer utilities until further notice. I put a hold on that for the last two months. Uh, Section 7. All persons at gatherings of 10 or more people for social and recreational purposes included, but not limited to community, civic, public, leisure, or sporting events, parades, concerts, festivals, conventions, fundraisers, and similar activities are prohibited until further notice. Spiritual faith-based activities are encouraged to limit the numbers of patrons to 10 or less, or at least six feet in space available between patrons. The following activities are deemed essential. It may continue to provide all precautions listed in there, uh, here too. Errands to maintain health and safety and individuals to health and safety and immediate family, household members, or pets. Uh, getting necessary services or supplies for individuals to immediate family, household members, or pets, such as food supplies necessary for staying at home. Engaging in outdoor activities such as walking, hiking, biking, or running, providing at least six feet difference, uh, distance of social distancing and maintained, and donating blood at authorized facilities. Section 8. Restaurants and bars with food services by order by the governor of March 24, 2020 will remain open to the counties that have confirmed cases, but must close the dining areas offered instead. Curbside pickup or delivery, other privately owned gathering places are limited to the number of patrons of 10 or less at that such at least six feet, square feet available at each patron. Local gyms and exercise facilities are declared non-essential businesses by the governor. On the same date, they will be closed, business explicitly listed, including hair salons, gyms, theaters, massage parlors, tattoo parlors, and museums, etc. Section 10. Individuals performing essential shopping activities described above to strongly encourage to shop alone, not in groups, leaving family members at home if possible. Number 11. All residents are strongly urged to wear a mask, a face mask, handkerchief, or other protective covering to cover the mouth and nose when in public places. All businesses within the city limits are strongly urged to limit the number of customers inside their store, place of business, under the decreased chances of exposure of COVID-19. This also includes the practice of six-foot distance in the cashier lines, limiting clusters of groups of people within these stores or places of business. No more than one person per 200 square feet. This includes customers and employees. All businesses within the City of El Reno should be allowed to maintain, open, and designate certain periods of time to support vulnerable guests and customers, including those of 65 years of age and older, and those within underlying health concerns. Section 14. Crimson Creek Golf Course shall be open to the city residents only and annual pass holders, with the following precautions in place. No more than five people in a group at any given time. Practice social distancing while on premises. Valid proof of City of El Reno residency will be required. City, uh, Crimson Creek Golf Courses will be limited to singles only unless you live in the same household. Personal carts are recommended. To follow CDC guidelines for social distancing. For more details, booking precautions in place, please contact the pro shop. Section 15. All playground equipment will be closed for youths. Tennis courts are limited to two people per court. Volleyball, limited to four players at a time, practicing social guidelines, distancing in the vicinity of the court. Skate park, disc golf, and open spaces, not otherwise addressed herein, will remain open at this time. But residents are required to practice social distancing and all precautions outlined, including the lake, El Reno. Six, uh, Section 16. The state of emergency shall have continued on until April 30th, 2020, or extended or terminated by further proclamation. I sign this day, April the 20th, 2020. April 7th, 2020. Okay, well, that's a lot of reading. Hard to do that. Okay, um, so let's talk about kind of what we're doing here tonight. Let's move on to... I'll, let's, let's talk about Item 9, and then I'll open up F. Does that make sense? And then we'll close Item 9 out. Is there anybody out there, Ken? Okay. Item 9 is discussion, consideration, possible action to approve ordinance number 9225. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of El Reno, amending Chapter 19 Civil Defense, empowering the mayor to declare a state of emergency by proclaiming regarding enemy caused emergencies, natural emergencies, health emergencies, and set forth restrictions deemed necessary to protect health, safety, and welfare of those general public, and define the penalty associated with violation for those restrictions set forth in said proclamation. Appellying ordinance in conflict for providing severability and declaring emergency. Okay. So, there've been a lot of rumors, and I want to make sure we're all clear on this. Basically, in this proclamation, I have made it, we have, we have asked you in Section 11 to strongly urge citizens to wear a mask, handkerchief, or other protective clothing. The reason why we did that is we had several businesses contact us because their employees felt uncomfortable, people felt uncomfortable shopping, and other cities around us were doing this mask deal too. We have not opposed a fine, we do not want to impose fines. We're not here to do that. We want our citizens to be responsible. In saying that, in every one of these sections I read to you, the bottom line is, we have not, don't have anything, so if they're, if a young man, right now currently, Chief Brown, and his family, say, a father has his kids on the playground equipment, and we go up there and we have signs up there, and we say they're closed, and you ask him to leave, and he refuses to leave, we have no ramifications to do anything right now at this point in time, is that correct? So we don't have anything to do, you know, to do that. If, if someone is on the golf course, or let me rephrase that. If somebody brings, a, 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 a mother, or, well, mother and husband bring their seven kids to the store. As of this, you're here, we're suggesting shopping low. We don't have any ramifications to tell them to really leave. Does that make sense? It's not that we want to issue tickets. We don't have anything to tell them with, you know, they, they say, we're not leaving. So, what we're urging right now is people to absolutely wear masks when you shop in public. We are not asking you to wear them when you're out walking, when you're at the lake fishing. We know people have to get out. Uh, we've had a lot of, of people ask a lot of questions. We do suggest, and I've been talking to local businesspeople, and what our, but my suggestion is, if you all do this, we'll do a small fine of $100. It's not that we want to fine anybody, but that covers all 15, 16 of these sections, is that correct, Chief? So, i-if they're having a keg party at the lake, then, then that way he has something to, to, to break it up with. Now, I, I want to make sure we're clear, because I'm speaking myself, and I want you all to do it too. We're not wanting to infringe on anybody's rights. I don't want to get in your household deal. I, I want you to shop. If the, if the business allows you to wear a gun in there, then it's absolutely constitutional to carry a gun in there if that's what they allow you to do. We're not trying to do anything constitutionally right. I can't find anything in there, in the Constitution, that, 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 that points out that we can't protect people for health and safety. And, and, and not only I agree with that, but the President of the United States agrees with that, and the governor agrees with that too. We are asking you right now to basically, um, uh, do the right thing. We don't want to impose fines. That's not our goal, that's not what we intend on doing. Right now, as it stands, it is absolutely highly suggested that you wear a mask. I have talked to businesses, and they really want this thing done. What my thought process would be, is if you go ahead and give me the deal, we're gonna keep it this way until I talk to all the businesses we can to get a consensus. And then, we can make it to where the businesses, not the person individually is fined, but the businesses can be fined $100 if they allow. We have businesses currently in town, I know Beachers, and hats off, I'm sorry, United Grocery Store. Hats off to United Grocery Store, has a sign that says, "We're counting the amount of people coming in, and we're limited to the people who come in, and we're asking you to wear a mask." Walgreens and all the other stores are doing that too. The only one, I think, is Walmart, that's not, that's not helping us that much. But I have talked to the manager, and they're all for it, but they want us to make that decision because corporate won't do that. In saying that, we're gonna talk to them, and if they want us to do that, when we can suggest that them and their employees and their businesses want to do it. I know Ross Seaton Feed, all their employees are wearing masks. They want to be protected. We have to protect people. I'm not gonna get into the issue of... I'm not going to get into the issue of, you know, what size mask. We're trying to curb this terrible virus that we have. We're working currently three cases, I know of one death in El Reno, and we've had other cases that dropped off. The bottom line is, let's get past this. Let's open El Reno back up. Let's open Oklahoma back up. Let's get back to work. Let's get back to church. Let's get back to do what we have to do, but in order to do that, we're going to have to do certain things like this to curb that trend. So that's what I'm asking. Right now, we're going to keep this current proclamation in place, when we highly suggest, and I would like to talk to businesses, and it's my choice to do that at that point in time, to do that if we want to impose, and we wouldn't do it unless the businesses want to do it, and I want to make sure that they want to do it. It's just like when we first started this deal, a lot of the local bars were open. I called the bars, and they absolutely agreed with me. They were absolutely concerned with their bartenders, their staff, and their patrons, and they all shut down before we even did a proclamation, before the governor did. So I'm proud of them. I mean, I think people want to do the right thing. So that's where I'm at. So I think item nine basically is going to, Ken, give you all, and we can set $100 amount to that, or any dollar amount to that, up to $750 by law, but the intention is absolutely not to write fines. The intention is to do the right thing and try to do that, and try to work through this situation, and we've been doing that. We need you to help us do that. And we think it, I really want to hand it, like I said, to United Grocery Store and Ross Seaton Feed, and a lot of the other businesses, Walgreens, there's a bunch of them, and hand it to them. A lot of the banks here in town are all making them wear, so I think we can curb that and make that work. Okay? All right, so that's on item nine.
You got this? Is that what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no.
Right here. Okay. So now I hope everybody understands that. And here's the main thing is too, another thing is, if you don't want to wear a mask in there, then what we are urging in this proclamation too, Chief Brown, is to do curbside, use the Walmart. United has pickup. All of the, I think, all of the...
Most everybody's worked on it.
All of the pharmacies all have delivery now, I think. So we encourage you to do that, because we're encouraging you, the bottom line is to stay inside to curb this. Okay? So now I have on the line, who called in earlier, was Pat or Carol Dyer? No, I'm sorry, Paul or Carol Dyer? Paul, can you hear me? Paul, can you hear me? Paul or Carol Dyer, can you hear me? Tracy or Paul, let me have one of your phones. Nope, Tracy.
There you go.
Take this speaker out. Paul or Carol Dyer?
Uh, so... Can we get a mask, Charlie?
You should work a couple of hours.
I thought that would be for our doctor and nursemaid.
Carol?
I'm doing that.
Carol?
Have you pulled this, Chris, take care of her?
Carol, can you hear me?
I'm not making what I've written down. I was stuck.
Carol? Carol or Paul? Carol or Paul? Carol, Paul, we're trying to call you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can see like I can speak into the line. Can I hear him?
I can hear him.
They called another caller. Okay.
I'm trying to call them on the number they gave us.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic point.
Well, what do we do, Lindsay?
Yeah, I mean, you've afforded them the opportunity to...
Okay, well, we tried to get a hold of them. I don't know what's going on. They're not hearing us, so, okay. So anyway, we're on item number nine, and basically, I'm asking you to adopt consideration of the ordinance of 9225, and basically that gives $100 fine for all these items. And once again, currently, right now, there is not an item on there about a mask. Is that correct, Chief Brown?
That is correct.
And Roger?
Correct.
So the bottom line is, we're going to ask these businesses to do that, and if we do that, then we'll be working with the businesses, and if we oppose that, then the businesses can refuse service like they could, no shirt, no shoes, no dice, and that'd be on them. And then we can oppose them to that deal. We're going to make sure that they're on board with that before we do that, because we're all trying to work on one direction, and most businesses are with that. If they decide not to do that, then we will impose the other one to get it going, so we can get past this 15 days and see where we're at, to hopefully open back our churches, our businesses, and get our lives back.
So the $100 fine would be for the orders that are in, like the closed playgrounds, but when the businesses come on board, then that would give to for the fine?
If we did that, it'd be that too, yes. Yep. If someone was in the library, we could tell them to leave, you know, I mean, it's like everything else, we don't, you have to have some type of deal. And you know, the bottom line is, they're basically, what we're trying to do is this. These people are not going to work. They're nervous about things because people are creeping up on them. The employees are finding out that people are calling in sick. So what we want to do is, we want to encourage some masks. We would highly encourage the N95 masks if you have them, but if not, just covering. And the main thing is, we're asking you to cover your mouth, so you don't touch your mouth and then touch the basket or touch a deal of pop and put it back, and that's what the businesses are upset about. And the bottom line is, we want you to get in, get out, and go on.
I make a motion to me, Mayor White, this is Councilman JT Cronister. And now regarding, so we're going to approve this ordinance 95 with the $100 fine, and the house chief existing, if this, the ordinance is correct.
Yes, I mean, just basically, when we do emergency power, that we have something that we can charge somebody with, and we don't want to charge anybody, but we want someone to say you can't do, if they come and say, well, we're not going to do it, we can't, we have the ability to do something.
Okay, well, I make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Vice Mayor Cronister to approve nine with imposing the $100 fine. Real call, oh, second, by Ballhorn. Real call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
I make a motion to declare an emergency.
I got a motion by Vice Mayor Cronister to declare emergency, and a second by Councilman Robinson. Real call votes start with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, we'll go on to F. Audience participation. Ken, is there anybody?
You want to go back and do your D and E first?
Yeah. Okay, so let's now go back to, we'll go back to, new business, delicious agenda at the time, are there any? All right, we'll move on to consider agenda. The final item is be considered a routine motion, that should that motion be desired or any item that ought to be removed, but consider agenda considered separately. City manager recommends one motion we approve. Approval of amendments March 10, 2020, regular meeting of the El Reno City Council. Approval of fiscal year 2019, 2020, compilation audit, engagement letter in the fiscal year of 2019, 20, single audit engagement letter with Arledge and Associates. Approval of budget amendments for the first fiscal year of 2019, 20, ending June 30, 2020. Number four, approval of claims list, requiring cancel authorization for the period beginning March 1, 2020, ending March 31, 2020. Make a motion we approve. I got a motion. Got a second by Robinson. Real call votes start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. We'll move on to G, discussion items. Number five, discussion and consideration of possible action to accept the final plan of the cost road point Phase Two addition to the City of El Reno, Oklahoma. Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Ward, do you have input you want to say on this?
No, I think, I think we've submitted all of the information and they've done all the final inspections.
Yep.
To be complete.
That's the way we have it. All right, any other comments, Mr. Ward?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks. Dustin? No problems here. We need to go ahead and finish it up. We're trying to close on that land anyway to get this hospital deal going, so we need to get going on this thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're ready to roll. I make a motion we approve.
Second.
I got a second by Ballhorn. Real call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number six, discussion, consideration, possible action to authorize Grubbs Consulting to design and construct a secondary egress on the west side of Crimson Lake Estate 2. Matt Sandage, can you hear me at this time?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Sandage, we have a deal that they're going to do Phase 2 of that housing development, is that correct?
That's Phase 2 Crimson Lake Estate, this is the secondary egress going to the west by Mannheim.
But they are not going to use that for a road. They're just going to have it for fire protection, is that correct?
It's their secondary emergency egress, that's right.
So they're going to make it out of Millings, but they're not going to have it for a road. They're not going to, it's going to be blocked off, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. So it'll be a road there where they get to go out, they have to build a structure, they'll have a Knox box, a Knox box crash gate type situation, is that correct, Mr. Sandage?
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I make a motion, we let Grubbs Consulting design and construct the secondary egress the west side of Crimson Lake 2.
Second.
I got a second by Ryder. Real call start with Bob.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Discussion, consideration, possible action to authorize grant application for the 2020/20 ADA RP community challenge. Dustin?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
This is an opportunity that we have, what it will do in effect is allow us to place sidewalks and ADA ramps down Grand Avenue from Watts to Sunset, which will connect both Entrada, and if the other set of apartments there on Watts ever gets redone, it'll connect all of those people, plus that community which walks quite a bit to the Canadian County Historical Museum, and back up to Sunset where they can get to groceries, where they can get to other things.
Dollar store downtown, everything else.
Everything, absolutely.
And that will coincide, the reason why I picked that site, A, because of that walking traffic, and also coincide with our downtown 81 project that's going to start also.
Absolutely.
Okay. Make a motion we approve.
Second.
I got a motion approved, second. Real call votes start with Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number eight, discussion, consideration, possible action to implement a four-way stop sign at the intersection of East Wade and South Barker Avenue. Ms. Nettley, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you, council members, for giving me the opportunity. For context, this is the intersection that is located southeast at the library, and it has two real consequences. One, when you're going southbound on Barker and there's any traffic at the library or Johnny's, you cannot see, you see oncoming traffic, maybe trying to cross Barker and go eastbound way. You really have to be about halfway into the intersection before you can see. And then the other danger to see about this intersection is that coming westbound on Wade, there is not a stop, it's just a hall to Ohio and near Dick Hill, so people can just speed through that area, and my fear is that one day a child's going to dart out between the cars at the library, and it's going to be a tragic result.
Okay, are there any other questions? JT, this is your area.
Yeah, this is, yeah, Vice Mayor here, yeah, you know, coincidentally, about a week and a half ago, I noticed the same thing pulling up, and it's south, and when you're looking back to the west and all the parking right there really disturbed the side triangle, and you can't see much at all. You just kind of just have to risk it. I think that before we stop would be great there.
Yeah, I know, I've had a lot of really close calls there. I'm surprised to have a bit more actual accidents that I think if all are stopped, well, if the traffic is stopped there going eastbound, you can see it when you're stopped southbound on Barker, but if it's not stopped, actually, it's really wide.
It is.
I agree.
It is.
Any questions? Yep, go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the four-way stop at intersection of East Wade and South Barker Avenue.
I make it second.
All right, I got a motion. Ryder, second by Cronister. Real call start with Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Go on to 10, discussion, consideration, possible action to approve ordinances number 9226, an ordinance amending code section 250, the same being an ordinance in the City of El Reno establishing regulations of permit requirements for off-road vehicles, ATVs, use boat, and personal watercraft, appealing ordinances in conflict, provided for severability and declared emergency. Mr. Brown, since you and I, we've kind of been working on the lake stuff and trying to clean some old things up, we felt like we ought to go ahead and do away with the boat and jet ski permits, you know, at this point in time, if it gets cloudier, then we'll do that, but, you know, some people are getting them on there, we're not really having to maintain, we want people to use the lake, we want to be able to open it up. We, a couple of years ago, you know, we stopped doing the fishing licenses that's separate, you have to do your state fishing license, you have to have your state pass on your boat, but as far as anything else goes, we're just, you know, not trying to get, just stab everybody for $10 and fine them or anything else, so we'd like to, Mr. Brown, I'd like to bring that to you and basically do away with that.
Just the city ordinance is all we're doing.
Just the city, if you get a boat out there and jet ski, you have to have the state of Oklahoma.
Tags on it and everything like that.
Absolutely. State tags and numbers, everything else, you just don't have to have the city, Lake El Reno tag on there anymore. I make a motion we approve.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Real call votes start with Robinson. Roll call vote start with Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
I make a motion declaring emergency.
I got a motion for emergency?
Second.
You got a second?
Second.
Roll call vote start with, uh, Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we're going to go to 11, discussion consideration possible action on resolution 20 dash zero seventeen, resolution establishing utility fees provided for effective date. We've been working on this for about nine months, and, um, we have to do a lot of work. If you look at your attachment, I have it here. Our well fields, everything else is down on our well fields on our water plant, and we have to basically, uh, upgrade our water rates, we haven't, we didn't do it the last, I don't think, two years, Marcia, are you there? Marcia Lett?
Yeah.
Yes, we did not, we didn't raise them the last two years, is that correct?
Uh, no, the last year and the year before we did, but.
Okay. One year, okay, it'll be this year, so, yes, year and a half, it'll be a little bit over a year and a half or whatever, whatever else, eight months. So the bottom line is, we know now is the time not to do it, we want to put this off till we can do it in, in, uh, you know, August or, or September, whatever you all decide, we can talk about a little bit, but the bottom line is, we're raising the, uh, we looked at all the costs of, of all of Canadian County, whatever else is paying, they're buying water from, from Oklahoma City, and here we are supplying water, and we got to, we got to keep our water where we can supply more water, and our usage is going down. So, we've, uh, you know, we used to sell water to oil fields, we used to do dumping for oil fields, that's down quite a bit, we were getting eighty-seven thousand dollars a month on some of this, uh, raw sewage in there, and now we're down to eight hundred and something dollars a month, so, we don't want to put this in a general fund, this doesn't go to salaries, this doesn't do any of that, this goes directly ba, based on the plant to upgrade our water system, to upgrade our water plant, and we'll still be below, um, some places a lot, and some places barely below, everybody in Canadian County that produces water and their utility rate. Does that make sense?
Yes. Now, how much will this, uh, generate to go against this $5 million?
We think it, we think totally, we'll have to look at all the numbers and everything else, and we have to negotiate with, uh, uh, you know, we have contracts with the, where's our, we're asking you right now, because after today, Lindsey, Lindsey and Roger have to notify, um, uh, Houston Water District, uh, FCI, and Union City, that they have a 90-day contract extension, so we get, we got to notify them of the new rates. So, you know, we need to kind of set a date, you know, when you thinking, you know, July, August, you know, we want to get people to get, get through this thing, but there, we're charging those customers more than we are citizens percentage-wise, so, uh, we're trying to do it as, as, as fair as we can, uh, we, we've been, you know, staying standard by else, but like I said, we have to upgrade our system, and it all goes to these right here, and basically it's $5,194,000, we think this will probably take about a four-year plan to do. Does that make sense? So.
Make a motion we approve, Councilman Cronister.
Okay, well, let me ask you, what time, what ti, what timeframe are you wanting to, uh, uh, what do you think, what, what do we think we want to give everybody?
Well, this is May, April, maybe, maybe August?
Fine. Okay, so it'll be the billing cycle on August.
Right.
Lindsey, is that correct?
It will be September, or if we start the, or do the billing cycle of July, so.
The only thing is, is that, let me ask you, I really hate to, but, but, July is our first, is our fiscal year.
Yeah.
Start it off then.
Let's do July, but then, if, if it's, if it's still, if we're in the shape we are right now, then, then what we do is we can revisit that, does that make sense?
And then that will give the 90-day for Houston and Union City, and I looked at.
We can go ahead and notify them anyway if we do this.
Yeah, and I, when I looked at this, it's going to be a difference of like $10 a month on.
$10.
On everyone's water bill.
That's right.
Okay.
And the bottom line is, we're still below everybody else.
Yeah.
And they're buying water, we have to, we have some wells that we have to upgrade, we, we're selling water, and we have to, we have to upgrade those wells.
Let me ask you this question, when this is completed, will that reduce our amount of having to buy from Oklahoma City?
No, because we're set on a certain contract amount, and we're in that sweet spot that we do, we don't buy too much or too little. If we buy too much water from Oklahoma City, we get penalized, if we buy too little water, we get penalized. We keep that on just in case, and then if there's a backup, like a big fire, whatever else, if we, like, a, a water tower's down, then we need to have it, does that make sense? El Reno's in the best situation of all because we, 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 we have our own water supply, but yet we also buy from, from Oklahoma City, but saying that, we have to, we, we've upgraded the sewer plant, we're doing some roadwork, we did some other stuff, we have to do the water, and we're using this bunny that we're getting from the water to go directly back to the water. It's only for capital needs. Is that right, Marcia?
That's why we're trying to do this, to get capital needs.
Yes. Okay.
So the effective date is?
So the effective date is what?
July?
July billing cycle?
July billing cycle until, unless there's something, that we have to do something different, but let's go ahead and notify our other subcontracts as far as, they are July no matter what. So. Union City and everything else. Roger, you're looking at me, is that right? Okay. I can't see your finger, I can't, I know, I can't see your, I can't see your expressions. Hard to see your expressions on a, on a microphone.
I know.
Okay, so I got a motion by Cronister, is that right?
That's correct.
A second by Ballhorn. Roll call vote start with Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number 12, discussion consideration possible action to approve and accept project number J 37 Lime Slakers, approved final payment to Quicksilver Construction for the amount of $95,910, and activate maintenance bond. Tracy, this is a good example, we had some money before that we're not getting now, and this is what we had to do, we had to do, we had to replace two lime slakers out there at the facility, and that's what we can't fund anymore because we don't have the sales tax dollars to do that with the use tax. Does that make sense? Do I have a motion to start there, to do the final payment to Quicksilver?
So moved.
That's a second?
Second.
A second, roll call start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number 13, discussion consideration possible action to approve and accept project number K 12, sewer replacement between Sunset and London, approved final payment to loan Hickory Cattle in the amount of four hun, or four thou, I'm sorry, $4,585 in activate maintenance bond. Make a motion we approve, approve? Do I got a second? Second by Robinson. Roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to, uh, where am I at? Tracy?
14.
Discussion consideration possible action to approve resolution 2018, resolution of right-of-way public easement, utility across the right-of-way for OD, uh, ODOT, uh, for federal aid project J, uh, J 31807004 and a hole, state highway, job number 3180704 and a hole, construction 05 and a hole, right-of-way, 06 in the hole, utility intersection modification at US 81 and State Highway 66 in El Reno, Oklahoma, which is approved March 10th, 2020. Basically, they need a, they need a, we did, we already approved this, but they just need a resolution that I need to sign.
So moved.
I got a motion?
Second.
Second, roll call vote start with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. We'll move on to discussion consideration possible action to approve special event permit for El Reno Cruisers for Small Town Weekel Festival held in Sunset, on Sunset Drive at El Reno, Oklahoma, from June the 5th to the 7th, 2020, pending the COVID-19 regulations. Let's make sure we're clear. Um, I tried to call Alan, we have a great communication, uh, you know, I think they're trying to figure out, they're, they got a cutoff date, I haven't talked to you about that yet, but they're going to wait and see kind of what, how this next, you know, couple of weeks go out. Because of their event size, we have to go ahead and approve it because they have over 300, 250 people, so we went ahead and go ahead and prove it, but just because it's proved doesn't mean that we can go ahead and do it, because if we are under this motion and under this deal, we will not allow it, and they won't do it anyway.
Right.
I, I know them, so I just want to let you know.
Make a motion we approve.
I got a motion we approve, I second that, roll call vote start with Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Move on, discussion consideration possible action to approve special event permit for Smoke with the Water, held, uh, July 16th to 19th, 2002, pending the COVID-19 regulations, same deal. If we're under the deal, I know Josh and KK won't do it, but, you know, they're hoping that, that it's all over with by that time, we all are. Any questions?
Motion approved.
I got a motion by Robinson, second by Ballhorn, roll call vote with Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. We'll move on to discussion consideration possible action to extend Matt White's role as acting city manager through, uh, May 30, 31, 2020, or till permanent city managers in place.
Make a motion we approve.
I got a motion, I got a motion by Cronister, second by Robinson, roll call vote start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Mayor White?
I've saying? Discussion consideration possible action to approve resolution number 20 dash zero 20, resolution city council declaring COVID-19 a pandemic emergency and acknowledging use of emergency disaster funds and potential for FEMA reimbursement if necessary. Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion by White, second by Ryder, roll call vote start with Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson? Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number 19, nomination appoint three candidates to the Board of Trustees of Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for a three-year term commencing on July 1st, 2020-20. I nominate one person, I nominate Lindsey Greer.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion, a second, roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Cronister?
Yes.
Yep.
Councilman Ballhorn? Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll go on to 20, presentation financial reports. Before we get into this, uh, as you read the paper, we are concerned, I've made some adjustments, uh, I've tried to let some of you all know what, you know, what we've done, and staff, you know, kind of what we've done, um, we have, I think, 14, maybe more than that now, on COVID-related payout that we're getting reimbursed from the government right now, uh, uh, we're trying to come up with some different things, uh, I'm working on, uh, the budget for next year for you guys to approve, for us to approve, and, uh, Marcia's been working real diligent with that, we're trying to get everything together, all that went out to department heads today, is that correct, Marcia, Matt?
It went out today, and we're going to be working on building it for next year, what we can do, and seeing how we're going to end this year.
And I'm going to try to have a proposal together of what we're going to do with the manpower and how we're going to look at, you know, basically the bottom line is, our budget is $950,000, did you see sales tax last month?
Mm-hmm.
700 and something, now that was before the COVID, so I expect to be less than that. So we're going to have to adjust, uh, I'm working on some different options, and I'm trying to get everything together, so I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not ready yet because I haven't got all the information.
It may be good after all the toilet paper went out.
Well, the problem is, they're going to shut down, where are we going? I thought so too. So anyway, just to let you know, Marcia, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, we're just going to be looking closely at, and trying to slow down this year's budget because we do expect it to drop more on the sales tax.
Yeah, we, we might be looking at 20, 25% decrease. All right, any other questions? All right, move on to reports. Timmy, you got anything?
I don't know.
Uh, JT?
No, sir.
Tracy?
Question.
Uh-huh, sure.
What's going on with the, um, out there at the Man Camp, are those, are, are any of them, any of them are going to be used for, um, you know, first responders to current, you know?
We had a contract with them, we, we have a plan in place, what we had, and if you, if you remember, the newspaper showed, we had some contact with some, um, um, we had some contact with some people, and basically the bottom line was, is that we, uh, went in and, uh, uh, had a contract with them to use a certain pair of their room for those people that were isolated under, uh, isolation, uh, they would, thank God they was only for a short period of time because we got cleared, but, uh, they are not busy, and that's all I know.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we do have a contract, and they are paying us, and, um, you know, I, I suspect, um, that will go away, I will tell you, we and Dan Galloway and I were, kind of worked on that with Matt Sandage in the years past, the bottom line is, is that we, we, uh, intended for that thing to go away, uh, at some point in time, and it will, it has a contract, but I, you know, it slowed down, it always does, and it went away in other places, you know, that's going to relieve a lot of infrastructure for our lake, a lot of opportunities for us to have all kinds of things out there, you have now water and sewer and electricity that, uh, to the tune of about probably $400,000, infrastructure-wise, that's on our property that you have not had.
Yeah.
So we've always talked about having cabins later on, or you could have that at events area and have that main, you're, you know, kind of like your Blue Garden on Oklahoma City, where your trailers and your restroom facilities are out there, and then your constant areas and different areas, it leaves open a lot, lot of areas, so, we have options when they leave, when they leave, we'll be thankful. Anything else? All right? What we'll do is we'll go to executive session, we'll walk out and go in the back room, and then we'll come back and we'll finish Irma, okay?
We gotta do municipal yet.
Well, I have to get out of here.
No, 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 I mean after we're done with that.
That's what I'm saying, Irma, Irma, is that right Lindsey?
Irma, yes, Irma will be last, and also, I just want to let everybody know on the line that this line will stay open for the next open meeting session, um, as for an executive session will be elsewhere.
Okay, so Timmy and them, they, they got another number to call, right? And then, then they'll call back on the same number?
Yes.
Okay, Timmy, JT, y'all understand that?
We, we got the other number, I, but I, I need to call back the seven six four four number again.
Oh, 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 oh. You need to call, well, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll text it to you.
You will need a motion to go into executive session.
We've got, it's the one you announced earlier.
Well, that's, yeah, I thought you talked, oh, you're talking about the pass code, the pass code, yes.
Yeah, the pass code, I already got the, I already got the, the number.
Okay, yeah, the pass code.
I just need all the pass codes.
All right, so now, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Some move.
I got a motion by Ballhorn, a second by Ryder, roll call vote start with Cronister.
Can you read the executive session?
Yes, hang on, everybody get me in a hurry here. Consider convening with executive session pursuant to Oklahoma State statutes title twenty-five, section three oh seven, to interview Matt Sandage as a candidate for city manager and take appropriate action in open session. I got a motion by Ballhorn and a second by Ryder. Roll call vote starts with Robinson. Right you. Timmy. Cronister.
Yes.
Ryder. Ballhorn.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to come back to executive session. I got a motion for Bob.
Second.
I second from, uh, Tracy, roll call start with Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Ryder.
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. We'll move on to, um, uh, action. I make a motion that we, um, extend a contract to, uh, Stuart Matthew, uh, Sandage for, uh, city manager, and let Roger Reinhardt and myself appear those documents and, uh, try to get those back to you guys and, uh, get the, uh, negotiations done with, uh, with Matt. So move, I got a motion by Ballhorn. No, I made a motion, I got a second by Ballhorn. Roll call vote start with Robinson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cronister.
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Ballhorn.
Yeah.
Councilman Ryder.
No.
Mayor White.
Yes. Motion carries, four to one. Okay, uh, motion for German.
Some moved.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, now we'll go to Irma. All right. It's now seven oh five, I now call El Reno Municipal Authority meeting to order, roll